All right.
Welcome to the Westwood. Do we have my phone?
Yep.
Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. I'm Dave Atkins, chairing this meeting in the absence of our Chair, Trevor Wobenstein. And I want you to announce that all meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center. And if there's anyone else who'd like to record this meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware. See no one identifying themselves. The agenda is available at the back of the room, and please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will follow the order on the agenda, and the meeting will be civil, and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the Board. The Board will proceed to staff comments. The Board members will ask questions of the applicant, and then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it is time for the final commentary, the Chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by saying your name and address for the record. All comments and questions shall be directed through the Chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. First, Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes. One new item I've added under other business. You received a request to modify the traffic controls while entering and exiting the underground parking garage at 321-323 Washington Street. This is the new mixed-use building that's under construction and is in ten right now. So I've added that to other business under item number five.
Great. So the first item before us will be an approval-not-required plan to create two new lots on the east side of University Avenue, Avenue and Development Area D. Abby, do you want to give a quick summary of what's for us?
Sure. You received an A&R Plan, Approval-Not-Required Plan, for creating two new parcels on University Ave. If you -- new lots I and J. The new lot I, this is on University Ave. This is, as reviewed during your master plan modification, this is the parcel that will include the park, the future office, retail, and the future residential portion. This parcel is shown with over 600 feet of frontage on University Ave. And then the second parcel is the new lot J. This is where Brigham and Women's Hospital will be located, that you approved at your last meeting in May. The frontage will be 58 feet of frontage on University Ave, and then there's that access way to the building in the back. The minimum required frontage in this zoning district is 50 feet. Both these parcels have the access and the minimum frontage on University Ave. And if you recall, at your last meeting, one of the conditions of approval for the Brigham's review was that they return to you to create the parcel.
So as an approval-not-required, our role is to verify the frontage, the dimensions of the lots are okay, and then it's not required, and we're just to vote to endorse this, correct?
Right, right. Essentially, your endorsement is approving that this is not a subdivision as it pertains to subdivision control law, whereas these proposed lots already have physical frontage on existing road, and that the new proposed lot line meets a minimum of the 50-feet requirement.
Okay. So I'd like to propose a motion to find that this is an A&R.
Do I need to approve the A&R?
Don't we have to find that it is A&R first?
Yeah. Just through one motion.
Yeah.
Then let us endorse this A&R.
It's an A&R.
It's an A&R. For lot 33, lots 006 and 056.
I'll second that. And I have a few questions, because this is a little bit unusual. I mean, this is not a single ownership, right? Does Brigham and Women's own this whole lot, including, so the road is actually owned by Brigham and Women's in this case?
Can I invite the applicant to come forward and give his name and address?
So even though that's an entrance that may be used by other tenants, it's going to be owned by Brigham and Women's?
Correct. So for the record, Paulson Carter was already going to drive in the the throat. The throat of this parcel that achieves the frontage up on University Ave happens to also correspond with the entrance drive, and so all of the owners within this area do drive over that, and that happens by way of common easements and that sort of thing.
So you've established all those easements?
Yes, yes.
And something else unusual about this is part of the lot is in Canton.
Correct, that's that.
Does that affect anything at all?
It doesn't.
There's no new lot lines being created within the town of Canton.
Okay, so.
That parcel's.
So they don't have to approve it at all?
Correct.
Even though the lot outside of Canton is changed?
Correct. Are there any other questions from Board members, or?
No.
Anyone from the public wishing to comment? I'll ask for a vote. If a motion is seconded in all but any favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or extensions? We should go ahead and endorse this now?
Yep, yes. The model is underneath here, and then there's, I think, three paper copies.
Yeah, why did this come?
Yep, no, that one's for signature, too.
Yeah, it's signed off, so?
Yes, we have plenty of copies.
Thank you. So our next item on the agenda is Phillips Way, Lot 3. This is an material movement public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Dan Merrick, American Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, Keith Fangler, who is here with me tonight. Keith is looking to build a house for himself and his family on Lot 3A Phillips Way. The lot itself is a hill, sits higher than the cul-de-sac of Phillips Way, and involves the removal of some materials to construct the driveway and kind of grade off the front yard and build the house. We have estimated 2,700, 2,800 cubic yards of earth removal, and we have prepared a design plan that identifies the proposed grades. We have erosion controls in the front along the street. We have erosion controls in the back. We have limited work demarcations around the sides, because they're not shedding downhill. We also made a series of minor changes at the request of your consultant. We added a temporary stockpile area in the backyard during construction. We specified that silt sacks would be provided in the catch basins on Phillips Way, which are about 100 feet to the left on that plan, to the north. We specified that the filter sock, the compost sock, would be 12-inch diameter minimum, and we added a note that if there is ledge encounter, which we do expect to encounter some ledge, that it would, it's likely going to be removed by hammer, but it could possibly be removed by blasting, and any blasting, of course, has to be approved by the fire department and managed through their permitting process.
Where abouts do you think the ledge might be?
There's ledge in the front as you're coming up from the street, so if you look at, it's a little hard to see on the plans, but if you look at, as I'll walk. The reason why we have to take materials out is there's a rise here. The cul-de-sac was cut into a hillside, so you're coming up 2, 4, 6, 8, 10 feet right here. So there's going to be some ledge in here, probably with the utilities as you're coming in, the water and sewer services is coming in up to the house, and we're looking to basically roll that front yard over so that you'll be able to see the house, and it'll look good from the street. And then obviously, you have the excavation for the house itself, which sits up on the top of the hillside. And then the backyard slopes back and away from the house, away from the street. So I do anticipate there'll be some ledge in the utility services in the street as you're coming in from the street. That's about it on my end. I've seen the draft conditions. They all look fine to us.
So something unusual about this is you seem to be removing, doing work beyond the lot line in the neighborhood of?
The lot?
Yes, on the right side, so to the north of that plan. So we've consulted, Keith bought this lot from the Aramos, and there's a kind of a little knob that sits very close to the lot line, and we've discussed it with Phil Aramo, and it doesn't make sense for Keith to cut, you know, a steep slope at the lot line only, you know, whenever down the road, a year or two down the road, for the other person to come along and develop that lot and take the rest of it out. When that adjacent lot is going to be developed, that little knob will not want to be there in any case. So Keith and I discussed it with Phil, and we agreed that now is the time to take that little knob out so that when you, you'd just be able to transition over the lot line in a fairly level way, and that'll set the stage for that future house, which there is no plan to build that house at this point in time, but this just made the most sense for the two owners to kind of work jointly to set that up for the best possible future arrangement.
So who was the actual owner of that lot?
PJMJ.
Which is, what does that stand for?
I have no idea. The adjacent lot, yeah, it's PJMJ. I don't know what that stands for.
So do we have?
So Keith Fangler of Westwood, 19 High Rock Street. It's a trust that's, the trustees of that are Phil Aramo and Orgeri. It's the area that's.
So they were the original, the applicants, or the original subdivision?
Is that one of the lots in the subdivision?
Yes, it is. Yeah, that lot, too, in the subdivision.
Okay. But still, is, don't we need something to indicate the affirmation of the?
If you wanted to add as a condition of approval that I provide a letter from PJMJ allowing the work, certainly we could do that.
All right.
I mean, bottom line is, Keith can't do the work unless they allow the work anyways. It's not his property, but we certainly can document that for the file.
But we don't want to get approval for?
To do work on someone else's land.
On someone else's property, or?
I understand. So you could certainly write a condition that says that the work on the neighboring property cannot occur without the written consent of the owner.
And it has to be provided?
To be provided prior to issuance of?
Yes.
Of the building permit?
Building, or?
Of the issues of the?
Issuance of this decision.
Of this decision.
So if you could get it as soon as possible.
Track it down fast.
Until that's done, for that's provided. So basically, you're removing all the trees in this lot, pretty much?
No, we're disturbing, there's a lot of earthwork because it is a hill, so we're disturbing, I think, 70% or so of the lot. The back triangle, it's going to remain all wooden back there.
Yeah. But other than that back triangle, pretty much?
Yeah, because the whole front yard has to be graded, the driveway has to be cut into the slope, the front yard's cut down to achieve a reasonable grade in the front of the house, then you have the house box, and then there's the backyard. So yes, we're disturbing about 80% of the lot. We do have roof runoff infiltration systems on the plan, designed for two inches, raw volume of two inches of runoff from the house, front and back.
And you still need to get this on motor approval from the?
Tomorrow night.
Conservation Commission?
Yeah, we're going tomorrow night.
So there's nothing, chances are, there's nothing that they will do that will affect?
I don't think so. You have a standard condition that says that any revision be submitted to you, and if you deem it significant, we would have to come back. I think it would be unlikely that there'd be any significant increase in scope of the project. If anything, it might decrease, but.
All right. And the last thing, of course, is the route that the trucks will be taking to and from the, so there's more, you're removing, Phil, more than?
We're removing, yes. The only thing that's coming in are specialized materials like sand and crushstone and things like that. Yeah, we specked it out to go out Marjorie to Bubbling Brook, out to North Street. It's the most direct route out to 109.
How many, approximately how many truckloads?
Depends on the truck. They had to put the numbers at 165 to 330. 165 would be tractor-trailers, 330 would be 10-wheel dumps, or smaller dump trucks.
Any other questions? Any other decisions you want to?
Right. In this afternoon, in your updated meeting summary that I had at your desk this evening, and then I uploaded into our electronic packet, I had a list of suggested conditions. Those are 10 of them. It was on page two. The first condition was that since this application will be before the Conservation Commission tomorrow night, that any final, any plan revisions be submitted to me for the planning board file, and if it's a more substantial change, that it may need to return to the planning board for modification. The existing pavement on Phillips Way shall be protected from damage from loading and unloading of material into our equipment related to the proposed construction. The catch basins on Phillips Way shall be protected and a silt sack installed, as shown on the, this, the plan, revised plan that you received today, dated June 13th. The crushed stone entrance shall be replaced when the stone becomes clogged with dirt or is no longer effective. The applicant shall notify the Department of Public Works during installation and backfill the infiltration chambers that are proposed. The project engineer shall certify that the infiltration was installed per the proposed design, as shown on the submitted plans. The project has to comply with the noise in construction general bylaws of the town, and then they're outlined in this decision, that all the trucks carrying the earth to or from the property access Phillips Way from Marjorie Lane, from Trailside Drive, and then it goes out into Walpole on Bubbling Brook Road and North Street. The applicant is required to file any other permits that may be required. We talked a little bit, if blasting is needed, it's the applicant's responsibility to file with any other town or state or federal authority. The applicant shall be responsible for repairing any damage which may be caused to the public right of way after first seeking approval from the town, and then the 11th one that we've added about receiving written approval from that PJMJ LLC prior to issuance or release of this decision.
Do I have a motion?
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment?
One additional thing is the exiting from the, with the trucks, do they, is it standard to have the crushed gravel so they don't draw the dirt?
Yeah, we have a construction entrance.
Okay.
At the driveway entrance. That's in place, basically, until the driveway gets paved.
Okay.
It's riprap.
That's going to be replaced when it becomes clogged?
Yes, that's one of the conditions.
Yes.
I move that we approve the, and actually, this is, we're going to approve both a special permit and an EIDR, just in case, because?
I forgot to add that, if you recall, at town meeting on May 1st, you approved, or town meeting approved, a zoning amendment that changed Section 7.1 from a special permit to an EIDR, Environmental Impact Design Review, that was approved, but it's still waiting the final approval from the Attorney General. I don't expect, it wouldn't be approved, but if they approve it, then it is effective back from May 1st. So I'm asking you, and the way we've advertised is to consider as both special permit and an EIDR, the same requirements, same section of the bylaw, it's just type of permit, so we'll call it both in the decision.
So I move that we approve the special permit and EIDR for earth removal for the property on Phillips Way, with the conditions as specified.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I move we close the hearing on the material.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Next item on the agenda, 100 Louterbrook Drive, Wireless Communications Center of the District Environmental Impact and Design Review Public Hearing. To install three panel antennas at a height of 107 feet on the existing mon pole, six remote radio heads, a generator, equipment cables, and cables for Verizon Wireless.
Hello, Board Members. Good evening. My name's Chris Swinierski. I'm an attorney for Verizon Wireless. As you mentioned, we are here for EIDR on what we call under federal law, an eligible facilities request. Essentially, as you described, we are taking the place of a previous carrier on an existing pole. We're proposing to install three antennas at, I believe the top of the antennas is 107 feet, center line is 104 feet. Instead of the equipment shelters that we typically used in the past, we're now using two smaller cabinets, and there's also a backup diesel generator for power, all of which is located in the existing compound. So really, if you look at this elevation plan that you have on the screen right now, or the photo simulations as well, what we're doing doesn't change the landscape very much. I think, if anything, it probably makes it look better, because our plans call for a paint-to-match scheme, whereas the existing antennas that are on there now, in the place we'll be taking, are white, so they stick out a little bit more. But that's it. I mean, it's basically a very simple and typical installation. If you have any specific questions, we're happy to answer them.
So this is the mon pole that you can see from 128, right there, at the technology background.
Yep.
It's not a stealth one, it's a?
Sort of stealthy. It's, when I saw the paint job on it, I was pretty impressed. It actually mimics a bark to some extent, which is something we don't typically do. You probably wouldn't notice that unless you get very close, but it's not maybe what you're thinking of, like what we call a monopine, where it looks like a tree. It's not one of those.
It's not like a tree or a fly pole, so. Are there questions for?
You're going to be removing the old antennas from the old carrier?
Right. It may not be us removing them, but they will be removed before we go up, because we're taking their space.
Who is the prior tenant up there?
I believe it's Sprint, is that true?
No.
Oh, MetroPCS.
MetroPCS.
They are no longer with us?
They're no longer with us on this particular facility. In general, MetroPCS was acquired by T-Mobile, and a lot of their sites are still functional, but there are a lot of things that they're changing. Some things are being decommissioned, changed, reevaluated.
So it looked like there was just one antenna, maybe I couldn't see the other side of the pole, but?
No, there were three.
Yeah. I have that picture there. Okay. Doesn't look good. So the cabling is all going to be external?
Yeah, this particular pole is pretty much full of cable already. There has to be some space in there, so it can't really be packed so tight as you would see, like, for instance, stranded wire inside, because there has to be room for technicians to access it and even just to install it. We did explore that, but it's just impossibly tight in there and impractical, and especially in this case where the banding already exists for the cables. Really, the only solution is to run it where the existing cabling is.
All right, so there was a page where you're showing the cabling event.
Yeah, all of the banding is shown on the plans, and it is in the pictures, you just can't see it. The banding was also painted on that.
It's one of, not on the pictures, it's on the?
On the plans.
On the application, on the plans, is?
So all of those little rings you see going up the pole?
Yeah, those, so those are, they're commonly bands, and what's their purpose?
To hold the cables to the pole.
To hold cables, so the ones that are, so is the only cabling on the outside now from this facility, or is it cabling from other facilities?
No, from others.
From others. So could you go to, there's another one that shows the, some of the cabling.
I don't know that our plans show an inventory of the existing cabling there.
There was one that did show what's going to be removed and what's going to be replaced. No, it's, keep going.
Keep going down?
Keep going. All right there, now that's, but that's just showing your cabling? There's one that showed the existing cabling.
Oh, sorry. What sheet were you on?
This is S1, but let me see.
The S1 shows existing or proposed. The previous sheet before that, which is?
All right.
A3. In the upper-left, as the cable runs. The proposed cable runs from us are what you see at the top of that.
On the three.
View of the pole. And the existing exterior cables are the ones that you see on the left in the position.
Yeah, cabling is going to power quite a bit of the pole. That's the new cabling?
Yeah. The way this pole was designed is that the cabling was put inside for the first tenants on the pole, but now it's full. So I think probably whoever installed there first did what they could on the inside, and when it became full, they started going on the outside. The cabling itself is not really visible from anywhere, as you can see in the pictures.
We had a diagram that showed what the existing cable were, interior and exterior.
Was that maybe in one of your other decisions for this pole?
It may have been included with the past approvals for this site.
Oh.
Yeah, that sounds.
That's what I think it is.
Don't believe we have that in our plans.
Oh, okay, so all those other things are, okay, that's from a previous?
Yep, there are a set of plans submitted with the past approvals.
Right, probably if they were attached to the past approvals, there may have been a plan in there. I can come through that quickly.
So that past plan showed some reinforcement, so that's all been done already? And that's not part of the, that's part of the previous one?
Correct, correct. I mean, what we're proposing is on our plans.
Okay, so in all that engineering studies, there was looking at those are all previous plans?
Sorry, I don't, I didn't quite get what you were asking me.
Oh, 'cause I know it's quite a bit of engineering.
Um...
But it's about the ability of the pole to withstand wind and...
We did include a structural analysis?
Oh, that's what it is. Yep, okay, that's what it is. It was part of the structural, um...
Ah, okay.
Appendix C, I think, the additional calculations.
So that's in your...
Um...
Well, to be honest with you, I did not scrutinize the structural analysis. We do include that just to confirm for the town that it has passed. But I apologize, I was not aware that it included an inventory of all of the cables that are inside. So let's take a look.
So all the structural analysis has been done, and what did you provide, just a, an update to that? Is it, are you replacing with more cables than are being removed? You're putting in more?
Probably. I'm not 100% sure.
That's, that's what concerned me. So you did submit a structural analysis on the, for the new cabling?
Well, it's not a structural analysis for the cabling, it's a structural analysis for the existing monopole. But it does look like on page 26 of that, there's an indication of cabling that exists. There's an indication of perhaps some that is to be removed.
So you found, okay.
I think it's where Appendix C begins.
I'm not sure where, oh.
Oh, yeah, if you're looking at the...
Appendix C. All right, so Appendix C is that?
Oh.
Oh, I had it as Appendix B.
Oh, okay.
So is that your Appendix C, or is that the previous?
No, that's ours.
Yes.
Okay.
Perhaps it's not Appendix C.
Oh, yes, I know. Appendix B is the structural modification report, and then it's followed by Appendix C with the, the report on additional calculations.
So you're moving all of the, or someone else, either you or someone else, removing all the cables that will be no longer be used?
Correct. It looks like from this drawing, I'll have to count these.
So I'm still, oh, here it is, I've got it.
It says coax.
Yeah, page...
To be removed.
25 on my...
In your packet, it looks like...
Yeah, so there are, there are eight to be removed, AK. But those are located on the inside.
Right.
And you are proposing to put up a double roll of... 20 new cables?
15.
18? 18. So given, given that you're removing eight cables, couldn't some of them be put inside the pole?
Uh, no, because of what's in the pole now, it's incredibly difficult to do that. There's really no space to work with inside.
But the ones that are inside will be, definitely be removed, those eight abandoned to be removed, it says.
We have them slated to be removed, and if you want me to make sure of that, we can.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure they are removed. And how wide, do you have anywhere how wide the cabling will be?
Yep, I believe ours is inch and a quarter coax.
Right.
Let me confirm that.
So the width will be that times nine? Or are you, 'cause you're showing them double on the outside there. And what side of the tower is that going to be on? Facing what direction?
Let's see if I can figure that out for you. Off the top of my head, I don't know. Any of my colleagues know off the top of their head, please, if they're familiar, let us know. All right, well, it's...
So, so are you adding more bands? Or are you replacing the bands that are already there, already in the cable?
Uh, I think we're using the bands that are already there. We're not adding, not replacing. You know, if they find that something...
Okay.
Um, has an issue and needs to be replaced with their own, we probably would, but we're not adding bands.
But it'll be the same number of bands in the same locations?
Yes.
And those bands are, right now they're painted?
Yes.
And the cables get painted also?
Yeah, the cables obviously won't be textured to look like bark. That would be even incredible feat of artistry. But they'll be painted the base color of the tree texture that the pole is made of.
So this was originally installed, actually I was the person that, that asked for the bark, simulated bark. And the reason being that normally is it a dark color, but because it's simulated bark, no one can see it. But it keeps it from being shiny, and it keeps a dull surface.
Yeah, well, we can certainly use a matte finish paint. I think we typically do.
Yeah, so we definitely want it, that same kind of thing, brown and not shiny?
Yes, and we would. I mean, when we do paint-to-match, it's going to match the existing color. But if you recall, and I think one of our pictures shows it pretty well, it really is a brown with like those little gray streaks in it to look like bark. And, you know, for obvious reasons, you can't do that on an inch and a quarter cable.
Yeah, so this is Verizon, is the company doing this?
Yes.
And this is the same company that put in another tower recently at exit 3 on 93 and right in the Blue Hills Reservation in Milton?
Um, that's possible? I don't know. We're doing a lot of this.
Yeah, and so that one was, I think was turned down by the, by the Milton ZBA and because of its location, and apparently that was appealed and...
I don't know about that one.
Oh, yeah, it was about the ugliest tower I've ever seen.
I didn't do that one.
Sticking right up in the middle of the, of the right side 93 and in the middle of the Blue Hills Reservation. That's what the kind of thing we want to avoid here. And this tower, the reason we accepted the matte finish was to keep it as unnoticed as possible. And as it gets more and more cluttered, it gets to be more and more cluttered looking.
Sure.
The next, last, final important thing is how far do the antennas extend out from the...
It's about 11 inches. And our antennas can be pivoted to fine-tune them to get the precise direction. So it's roughly 11 inches.
Including the, the mounting behind it?
Yeah.
So the whole thing's only 11 inches?
Yeah.
Which is less than, than a lot of the other ones up there. And also the one on the second one down is really sticking out.
Okay.
The one you see at the top of the picture. So it'll be pretty much the way you see it here?
Mm-hmm.
So can we put that as a condition? That they're not to extend any more than 18, 11 inches from the surface of the...
It has to be approximate because, you know, we're talking about inches here. We're 107 feet off the ground. A, I'm not gonna go up and measure it, I don't know who is.
It's our building?
They're, they're going to fine-tune these to get exactly where they need them to be. Under federal law, believe it or not, the standard is 20 feet. We're certainly not going to have them hanging 20 feet off the tower, but that's the standard we're working with here. Um, I'm, you know, perfectly happy with a condition that says it will be as represented on the plans. To pin it down to exactly 11 inches, I think is a little difficult because I can't give you that measurement with really the degree of certainty that you're looking for.
So, well, can we say no more than about a foot approximately?
Sure.
Okay.
That's a foot in all...
Otherwise, yeah, off the surface, are you adding, you're adding no more than a foot to the radius of the pole?
Well, the antenna itself is about nine inches thick.
Yeah, and the pole...
So that doesn't give us anything to work with.
Yeah, but it's like if it's four and a half and then plus 11 more.
No, the whole, the pole...
The thing will not fit within one foot.
Oh, that's what I'm asking, yeah, it's...
Right, it's more like the antenna is about a foot off of the pole, 11 inches, I think was the typical calculation.
Oh, meaning from the pole itself to the back of the antenna?
Right.
Is a foot. Okay, and then the antenna itself is?
Um, this particular model, I think they're usually anywhere from, from seven to nine inches, so why don't we say approximately eight? Again, I think we're, we're talking about inches, 104 feet at the center line off the ground.
So it's like about this, like about this big around, and then add on 11 inches for the antennas.
It's about right.
Now adding 11 inches for the mounting. 11 inches for the mounting and it's like four inches for the antenna, or the other way around?
The antenna thickness is, why don't we say up to nine?
Nine inches.
And why don't we say one foot between the pole and the antenna?
Okay. And nothing else is going up there, I noticed. You've got those other little, the one, mounting above you, are these, those, what are they called? Radio frequency something, those little boxes?
The, the radio heads, that's what you're talking about, in this particular installation are going to be down at the ground.
On the ground.
They're going to be near the cabinets inside the compound.
So you're gonna have three antennas and three mountings, and that's it?
Yep.
Okay.
And the cables.
And the cables, which, but go up the bottom of the...
They come down to the bottom.
They, they attach from the antenna to the, and then go down the pole?
Yes.
And you're gonna have 18 of those for three?
Yep.
So six per antenna?
Any other, any other questions, Steve?
No, no, we got, you know, this, this is our very first pole in Westwood, and we tried to make it as good-looking as we could, and it's been tough over the years. There's more and more, first more and more carriers came on, and then the carriers come back and put more and more antennas, and they added those other boxes that were the radio, what do you call it?
Remote radio heads.
Remote radio heads. So that's added to the clutter quite a bit, so we want to keep the clutter down. But apparently, this looks like it will not increase the clutter.
It's about as well as it could be done, really. I mean, we're taking an existing spot. Um, I think what you end up with in the end is less than what you have, which is as good as we can do it, and really what we try to do too. I mean, we're, you know, we don't like to build new facilities if we don't have to. This gets the job done very well, very minimal impact.
Now you, the specifications I got here are from March 2016. Were they taking it, now you're removing eight cables, and you're adding 18 cables?
Correct.
So we're gonna be basically adding 10 more cables to this pole. Are you confident with these numbers that it's within the specifications that the structure can handle the extra cable?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we have in our structural assessment.
Okay, so you're fully confident with that?
Our structural engineer is fully confident. You don't want me to say yes, right? Well, I'm not qualified to.
And I go through these, and I can't read these numbers. I don't really know what they mean, so...
Me neither.
But we have somebody...
I have a stamp at the end.
We have somebody with a stamp that's saying yes, this can handle this, okay.
Are there any, any comments from the public? Any additional questions or motion?
All right, so we have, you want to go down some of the...
Sure. Now, I drafted a list of conditions that is in your meeting summary, updated tonight, and then we just, did you get this one from this afternoon?
I did, I was reading it while I was driving.
So we have waivers as well?
Yes, so there were a few waivers that we needed with this. It was a total of six waivers. Number one was a waiver from this, providing the stormwater management report, the traffic impact study, the failure removal report calculations, the full site, site plan, providing all information on the site, including the topography and the drainage structures, exterior lighting plan, and the presentation model. Those are required as part of your section 7.3, environmental impact and design review. And then a couple of them are required in your rules and regulations for wireless facilities, or EIDR rules.
I move that we waive those, those requirements for the, for the environmental review.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I drafted a list of five suggested conditions, maybe six that we expanded on tonight. Number one is the applicant shall submit after the facility has been installed to submit a report provided by an engineer demonstrating that there's no negative impact on a town's emergency radio communications. Number two is that the planning will be notified within 30 days of any discontinuance of this facility, and then, and then removed within six months. Condition number three, the antennas shall extend no further than, I think we said 21 inches? Is that what we arrived in? 21 inches from the surface of the pole? Is that really right? The antenna...
Let me go up there and measure it.
Okay. The antenna array and all mounting brackets, bands, cables, and all associated equipment be painted to match the existing matte color of the existing facility, and repainted as necessary to minimize any fading or discoloration. Number five, this one is, has to do with bundling those cables in the, in the bands so that they're not obtrusive. And then the sixth one was to remove the, the existing cabling that's no longer needed. I think you said there was eight cables that should be removed.
We're just removing cable, we're not removing any radio heads existing?
Uh, all of the existing equipment is being removed as well?
Okay.
In, in that particular spot.
Right.
Yeah.
So it should be cabling in all equipment?
All, all cabling equipment and antennas from the previous...
Okay.
Installation.
What would you say, at, at that height?
At that height.
Just to make it clear, we're not ripping down our competitors' equipment.
So in the, in the agenda, it also says six remote radio heads, generator, equipment cables. So is there a generator?
We are installing a backup power generator, yes.
Right, you're gonna be removing the equipment from the ground?
Um, I think the equipment from the ground has all been, already been removed because the pad is vacant right now. So there, there was equipment there, and there's existing concrete pad that we're going on. Um, I don't know exactly what it was, although I'm sure it's in the previous approvals, but it's already gone.
So every, every decision we have, that we're supposed to be notified within 30 days of any discontinuance of the wireless, so obviously that hasn't been happening because we didn't hear from them, that they discontinued this one.
I don't know what's...
And that's not, nothing to do with... That's not, nothing to do with you, I'm just finding that out from the, that, uh, we certainly wanna be notified when, when there's any discontinuance.
Do we also need to add a, a condition for the the generator, uh, the usage of the generator, the, the, do we have a time of day that we expect?
Yeah, is this only going to be emergencies, or is this one of those generators where they run once a week for a certain period of time?
Every generator does that, actually, if you want it to function properly. Uh, we can certainly set that up to be any time, it's a twenty minute test run. Um, you know, this is a diesel motor, the biggest one we use, I think, has a five point four liter engine, I don't think this one's that big. Um, it's in a sound enclosure with mufflers, so, you know, your average diesel pickup truck is bigger than a six liter engine. Um, you don't hear this, nobody's going to hear this, but, yeah, we can set up the weekly test any time you want.
I know in the past, we've, well, like, like I made it in the middle of the day, like, in the middle of the week, or midday, when it would be less bothersome to others.
I remember our approval of the one on East, on East.
Yeah, that was quite different, there were actual residents there. This one, it's at the edge of a parking lot, and and between that and one twenty-eight, so probably the noise from one, one twenty-eight would be louder.
We'd probably drown it out, so any time that.
Yeah.
I don't think that should be a problem.
Okay, so.
Or we can just specify testing only
Okay.
only during, uh, day like daytime working hours.
Okay.
Would be more than enough.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, accept the W O C E I D R impact design review public hearing for, what am I at? For one hundred Loudbrook Drive.
Steve, sorry to interrupt, did you take public comments on this? Did you take?
Did ask.
We did, we did a while back, yeah.
Okay, we did, okay. Okay.
Didn't get anybody.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, back to me.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Uh, make a motion to accept the W C O D E I D R at one hundred Loudbrook Drive with, uh, the previously stated conditions.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any extensions? And do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some of it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item number four. We have a request from Gables Residential, a university station, to extend the existing time limit for leasing signs at eighty-five to ninety-one, and ninety-five years.
No, um, the applicant's not here, let me just pull up the photos. All right.
The applicant is not here?
No, the applicant's not here tonight, that, if you recall, well, actually, I guess Steve's the only one that was on the board at the time. In, um, two thousand fifteen, the Gables Residential came to you to request, uh, under this specific, um, zoning district, no temporary signs are allowed, and no, um, or no banners are allowed. Um, so they came to the planning board under what we call, um, project-specific signage alternative plan, and they proposed, and you approved, three leasing signs at Gables. Uh, one located, um, this is at the corner of, um, Station Drive, um, closest to Nacho Ever's Joe's. And then one near, close to the, um, between where the Starbucks is, and then in the parking area, um, facing, um, Anthony's. Um, you allowed that, um, with a time limit, that it'd have to, um, come down or be removed by June, end of June this month in two thousand seventeen. Um, so when I checked in with them, they did ask if it could be extended, they've submitted a request asking for additional six months. They're not yet fully leased, they, um, say they're about eighty percent now, and that they're, um, looking to have the signs up for a little longer, saying that um, people often mistake their, um, their, this project for condos, and that the signage does help, and so they're looking for, um, for you to approve an additional six months to the end of December for these three signs.
So when were they installed?
Two thousand fifteen. Um, you, yeah, one first, first was, um, I think one of them was approved for, two were approved for us, and then they added the third one later in two thousand fifteen, at the end of two, July two thousand fifteen, and then November two thousand fifteen. So you said essentially two years.
So they want another six months? And what did the, what did we say at the time? Uh, they could come back for an extension of how long?
Um, well, they, you said at the time that I could extend it for an additional six months, so I did that back in December until, until the end of June.
Okay, so originally what's for?
So originally, you agreed to it to, I think, the end of two thousand sixteen, and then you had a condition that unless, um, extended and writing, um, by the town plan, if I, up to an additional six months, so you gave them six months little, um, so, um, January, I extended it to June thirty.
So originally a year and a half, and then you gave them permission to extend another six months to two years.
That must have been it, yeah. So they have about two more weeks, two more weeks until.
What is the composition of Gables, so it's, it's all apartments?
It's all apartments.
And then what's the, uh, how much affordable, and what are the different categories within that, do we, do we know that?
Um, it's twenty-five percent affordable, um.
Twenty-five percent?
Is it?
That's a lot.
I thought, or was it twenty? Uh, between twenty and twenty-five, I don't remember.
And do we have any feedback with regards to the signs, are they, it seems like some of the signs look, um, uh. Are they distinctive? They're distinctive, you're right. Uh, sometimes when signs up for a while, I mean, I know that they, they certainly help the marketing of it, uh, but a continual and s, continued sign like that, I just don't know, have we received any feedback from residents, or?
I have no, no, I haven't heard anything from anyone, um, no one that lives there, or anyone other than the applicant requesting the signs.
You have to ask how much these signs
How they were.
really serve, because you put them up, and after a while, people driving by, so used to them, they don't notice them anymore. Uh, only new people going by would, would ever notice them, but there's so many other ways of advertising now, uh, that the chances of someone just driving by and seeing the sign and saying, oh. Yeah. Uh, they rent there and, uh, I don't know if the probability of that happening is great enough to, to say we should keep these signs up for any more, any longer.
Well, and they'll be leasing forever, I mean, it's not like it, once they get the last ten up there, no.
Right, but as I recall, they're what, sixty percent?
Um, in this letter that we got on May twenty-sixth, they said eighty percent.
They were eighty percent?
I, I thought they were less, last time, last time I had heard, they were less than that, but.
They're more, isn't there a monthly report that, uh, says exactly how many, how many are full or all that?
Yes, I think NOR usually gets that, I don't know, last I heard.
And we're just letting you approve it for another six months?
That's what they're asking for.
No, it's in our best interest, town-wise, that we fully lease out this building. Uh, personally, I don't see any problem with another six months. If it's gonna help them reach their goal of a hundred percent occupancy, that's fine, but I think this should be the end.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Well, we, we could, we, you know, we could just say, if they happen to reach a certain occupancy percent before then, then they should remove.
Well, I think, yeah, we should make a condition, once they hit a hundred percent, they have to come down immediately.
Uh, but usually you don't get exactly a hundred percent, because people are always moving in and out.
I think it's easier just to have a time, eleven, I mean, we should, it would be good to know the numbers, because people are always curious about that, whether it's an, uh, that report would be great.
Right, we can check.
Yeah, you you get that report out?
They, um, I, NOR does. Um, in your letter that they sent you, um, they're hoping that they would have ninety-five percent, and they consider that stable. Um, so they're hoping for ninety-five percent by the end of the year.
Well, it seems like you could approve this and look at it at the end of the year.
Well, I think.
I think the end of the year is the end of the line.
Yeah, I think definitely that's the end of the line, and it'd be nice to get it down earlier if they reached that ninety-five percent, but it, that's not gonna matter much at that point. After two years, a few more months, isn't gonna make much difference.
Yeah.
It seems reasonable.
All right, I'll make a motion.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, my fault.
Nadine LaSalle of each Capri is the O thirty-two Webster Street. Um, Abby, did you say that NOR is actually, like, keeping track of the rentals or the leasing? Because I'd hate for them to, you know, tell us now that it's eighty percent full when it's actually only sixty percent full.
Right, well, NOR doesn't keep track of it, she gets monthly reports.
I'm sorry?
She doesn't keep track of it, um, but I think she gets reports from the, um, developer.
I just think someone needs to keep track of it, so.
So, could we, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea if, if once a month, uh, sometime in the meeting, you, you give us an update.
Okay.
That'd be good, and then we could all, and that way it gets on, on the cable TV and they're keeping it in.
They've been sixty percent full for six months now, I mean, I, I'm kind of hard to see, it's kind of hard to think that they went from sixty to eighty in, like, two months. I mean.
Well, we all want them to.
I want them to be, I'm, I'm not opposed to, um, extending this.
Wha- what are your concerns?
I'm sorry?
What are your concerns?
My concerns are that I'd like for them to be a hundred percent leased, and are they actively, I mean, the sign.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Like Stephen said, I drive by every day, I see the sign, I don't pay attention to it anymore.
Right, I understand that.
So are they really attracting the market that they're trying to attract is my, I guess, the question, but not for you. I mean, it's, whoever's reporting to the town.
Yeah, I think I last I heard it was hovering around that, like, sixty-seven, seventy percent for quite a while.
That's what I thought it was at around town meeting, that it was about sixty, sixty-five percent, that's my recollection, I could be wrong.
So is that a condition that they report as a condition of one of our original, uh, approvals?
I don't think so.
Well, I think maybe we should condition upon them adding not only
Okay.
the monthly reporting of, of, uh, what the occupancy rate is, but what kind of advertising they're doing to actually increase that.
But, excuse me, I don't want to cross the line, I mean, it
Yeah.
it's a private ownership or whoever it is, I mean, the town doesn't own the land, correct? So can you really impose them to say, okay, you need to report to us what you do to market the property?
I, I think, I think if, yeah, I think if, if they want us to allow them to put up temporary signs, then we can ask, what are you doing?
Condition upon.
So these temple signs will be no longer needed.
I want to see it a hundred percent leased.
Me too.
So why don't we do that, put in a condition that, uh, that the monthly reports, uh, indicate how much advertising and where examples of it be provided, uh, so that we can be assured that these signs will no longer be needed.
Okay. Okay, so this will be through the next six months at least?
Six months, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I wonder, is that, is that like a public report, it would be useful to share that on the town website or something, you know?
I don't know if we get anything formal to GMS, I don't.
I just found something in NOR's files, but I don't know if it's public.
Yeah.
Um, she has a report through February eighth, two thousand seventeen, but it's, it's similar to what you said, sixty-three percent. Um, sixty-three percent market rate units.
Oh, my, that's, then is that?
About a hundred and sixteen.
Okay, but that doesn't include.
So actually, I don't know if it's a percent number.
Right, that doesn't include the affordable, then, then that boosts the percent, maybe that's where the discrepancy is between the sixty and eighty.
I would imagine that the affordable would have been leased once it's completed for lease, I mean, there's a waiting list on the federal section eight.
A hundred percent, yeah. Oh, yeah. Right.
People are looking for houses.
So if it's twenty percent affordable, then the sixty and the twenty gives us the, you know, the over eighty.
Makes sense.
So, yeah, ask them, you know, give us more complete numbers on that, and examples of the kinds of advertising they're doing, so that we know that these signs will not be needed.
Okay.
So I think, um, if you modify the, uh, so we have a motion to approve this with the amendment with your concessions.
Okay, a condition on the, um, providing the monthly report of the, um, their advertising and their occupancy, advertising efforts and occupancy, and then, um, if they reach ninety-five percent prior to end of the year, to remove the signs.
True.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did someone second that, or did I second it anyway?
I thought you seconded my motion.
Okay, I seconded it.
Now, if those.
Correct.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't hear first, I didn't.
Okay, you didn't hear my second, I seconded it.
Okay. Okay.
The next item on the agenda, I think, is a discussion of, um, reviewing parking garage traffic controls at three twenty-one, three twenty-three Washington Street.
Right, um, just a minute, I put a couple things at the back of your packet tonight, um, let me just pull it up. The, um, the owner for the, the new building under construction, the mixed-use building on, on Washington Street, he was getting ready to order the arms um, that were shown in the parking garage, um, on the approved plans, and I just point out, I think you have a hard copy at your seat tonight, there was, um, so the underground parking garage, this is for the tenants of the building, um, for residential and the commercial, um, there's one of those mechanical arms set back, this is the street here, the sidewalk, then the end of the garage, there's the arm here, and then one right before the sidewalk, as you um, exit the building, um, he was concerned about how this arm, especially this one closer, would look, um, for the building, he was asking if there's any other alternatives, there's still the pedestrian audible, um, signal that goes off, um, so he sent a couple images of what the, um, that mechanical arm would look like. So he thought, was wondering if maybe a garage door at the bottom of the ramp, um, would look better, um, I responded that the garage, the door at the bottom of the ramp doesn't really help, I know when the planning board reviewed this in two thousand sixteen, I think the first approval, um, had a, a door at the front of the garage, but that was later removed because I think he didn't like the way that looked, um, so it was opened, um, but the purpose of having so, a stopping mechanism at the front was to get the cars to stop before they cross the sidewalk, so that they stop and then look, instead of just going out onto the street. Um, so the pictures on the right are what the arm would look like, um, if you're okay with the arm looking like that, or if you have any other suggestions?
Different looking arms.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, they're usually painted either the white or the yellow or the stripes or something.
So I don't recall that there was going to be an arm right next to the sidewalk, uh.
To stop pedestrians?
Well, I, the problem was not.
There to be motion activated, it says?
Um, yes, I think it's sort of that on the plan, um.
There's, so there's nothing, there's just a painted line dividing this, the way it's set up there now, someone could squeeze in around the, uh, the two gates there, there's.
Oh, yeah, so the, the first one, as you enter, says remote activ- Oh, yeah, so the, the first one as you enter says remote activated, nine foot wide auto gate. And then as you exit, it's, um, motion activated, I guess, because you already got in, so you can get out. Um, and that one's right before, right before you enter the sidewalk.
So I also thought that we actually wanted a garage door, but he didn't, the, uh, developer didn't want a, that extra expense of a garage door. And so is he now willing to put in a garage door?
Not at the front, not something designed to match the front of the building. He proposed.
At the bottom, no, at the bottom, yeah.
Right, yeah, he proposed at the bottom. That first picture on that back page.
Yeah.
That was what he sent me on Friday.
First picture on the.
You have a scene, yeah.
I think we should take him up on the garage door, you know, that's situated at the bottom of the ramp.
How is that gonna help traffic top?
So you need, well, you need, you would need, uh, you, you wanna have like a, a stop sign at the top for the cars and something that says caution pedestrians crossing, and there may be a flashing light. And, but an audible signal, you wanna be pretty, you know, you don't want anything too noisy.
Well, there already was the audible one there.
There's not gonna be two lanes, correct?
I thought.
There's only gonna be one single wide lane, you know, one side for entrance and one for exit.
Yep.
So that garage door's gonna have to go up and down and every time somebody pulls in or pulls up. And that's gonna add to a lot of noise in that vicinity.
Depends on, depends on the door that they choose. Some of them are very quiet and others are noisy.
But are you saying have it down in the, down here, the bottom of the ramp?
Yeah, at the bottom of the ramp.
The bottom of the ramp at the back of the?
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll be way down inside the building, probably. So if you have the top and you look down, you just see, you won't see a garage down there. You just see the door.
Right, okay, so basically at the bottom of the ramp. So you're only gonna see the top, is.
Yeah, this is not a good diagram.
Right, the ground is not very good for that.
So you go down at the ramp and, and then there's the entrance and then there's above the entranceway, there is some blank space there because, uh, you have to have an even ceiling that's, that's at the height, one story above the street.
Continuous heading going across, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's, the ceiling is at the, at the, between the one and the, and the, and the first and the second floor. And then it goes down to a wall that's one story high and then is the opening that's one story high. And the roof is down there, so I think the garage door would look better than just looking down.
But I agree, it would look better. I just don't wanna, how much traffic's gonna be coming in and out of here during the day? And with that door up and down.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. That's my concern.
And what happens if you drive down there? So remote activated, so does that mean you need to have a road control and so if you're just.
Is that what he?
Yeah, I think it would be for all the, all the tenants, um, will have an access.
With a flaw or something.
So they'll, they'll be activating it as they drive down the ramp and.
But if you don't know about that, you're taking a left on Wa- if you're on Washington taking a left in there, you grabbing your remote control to.
Yeah.
To open up the gate? How does that work?
I do it in my driveway all the time.
Yeah, but you're not crossing relents of traffic.
Well, yeah, there's plenty of room for them to drive in and stop if that's a concern. If they, if they can't do two things at once, they can drive in, stop at the, stop where they would have to stop anyway.
Well, regardless, they're gonna have to do it anyhow.
Yeah, they, I mean, they, they would have the same problem. If the gate is there.
Right.
And, and they weren't quick to, to click it when they're going, making the turn. They'll pull up to the gate and then click it. It'd be the same thing. Wouldn't make any difference.
So can, can we get back to the, the original question and is there, does the applicant, are they gonna come in and explain what their options are? To, for me to look at a couple of photos and make a decision is.
Right. What's his concern?
I mean.
What are they asking?
Just the way, the way that it looked. I mean, it, it's approved right now with the two arms and he just let me know on, on Friday that he, he didn't think it was gonna look nice with those two arms right there on the street and if there was another alternative.
I, I think the two alternatives is put the arms back in the same spot, side by side, further down. You know, the, the, uh.
Bottom of the ramp?
Well, it's, what is it? It's, uh, about nine feet down from the, down the ramp.
What are we dropping from here to here? I mean, we're dropping ten feet, correct?
Oh, no, we're dropping ten feet from, from the sidewalk, it's not to drop, yeah.
From the sidewalk. It's ten feet, yeah.
My concern with that would be the pedestrian safety. If you move that exit arm further down the ramp, uh, you can have a, an accelerated car coming across that sidewalk.
Yeah, but.
As, I mean, I see a lot of students from Zavaria at the street as well as other.
Yeah, but you, you, you want, you want a sign there, like a flashing sign even as the car approaches. There's maybe the stop sign with lights up and flashes. I mean, just what you see in Boston, see a lot of them. And they make a lot of noise. I don't know that we want a lot of noise. But to have the flashing as the car approaches, the, the sign says stop and, you know, pedestrians crossing. Have that light up. And I see those signs all the time in garages.
We got, it's just like an LED light.
Yeah.
Standing out. There's just letting people know that.
Yeah.
Has exit.
Are neighbors back there gonna be able to see this flashing light?
No, because it'll be completely.
It'd be inside the garage.
Could even be flush mounted on the building.
No one, no one will see it.
So this wall, this is part of the height, this looks north?
Yeah, there's a, there's, there's a wall like here that's, uh.
That goes straight all, all the way out?
It's open. It's certain, I think it's open. I.
I think it's, I think the whole thing's gonna be open.
Yep.
It's not completely, yeah, but it's, uh.
I think there's just gonna be a concrete, uh, that's basically curving down the.
There is a kind of wall with, with, um.
But if you can't see it, then why is it a problem? It's only visible from the street.
Yeah.
So why, so why is that arm a problem? Where it is right now, this one.
It's gonna be right out on the sidewalk.
Well, you know, why don't we go down and take a look at it?
This is, here, this is it right now.
Yeah.
That's our picture if you wanna pass that down.
Yeah.
I mean, how's the, the fences, the, um, the construction fence is there now, but it's open?
It has the side of the building, but it's, but it's open in between, uh.
Yeah.
Is he at a critical point right now in the construction that he needs an answer fairly quickly from us?
I think I'm on a site visit so I can see.
Absolutely, that's.
Where we're gonna be, where, where the flash.
We're gonna have to definitely do a site visit, but how soon does he need an answer?
Okay, okay.
Well, the flash, instead of the arm here, that's where you should have the flashing light. And then any, any sign.
Okay. Okay, so the next meeting is June twenty-seventh, so pick it up on June twenty-seventh.
The gate can be down, yeah.
But do you want to get any direction in the meantime?
I, no. Meet with the contractor.
Okay.
And basically have a discussion with him at the site. So we can get a complete idea what's going on, what he's proposing.
Okay.
That might be something we're gonna have to arrange some time that we can all do at once instead of doing it individually.
Okay. Um.
Cause the way I look at it is that if that flashing light is not gonna be visible from the street, then that arm is not going to be that visible.
No, no, because, no, the arm, the arm will be visible because you can look right at it. The flashing light sign will be facing away from the street.
But you're, you're only, you can only see it if you're looking at it from Washington.
Into the grass.
If you're walking down the sidewalk, you're gonna notice that light.
Yeah, so that's, cause my, my main concern is the public safety.
Absolutely.
Uh, cause even if it's flashing, somebody can accelerate it up.
Absolutely.
Right, but, but depending on the timing of the gate, the gate might go up as the car approaches, so.
But I think the site visit will help because I have a feeling that that gate isn't gonna be a visible problem.
If you really want the car to stop, you're gonna have to have them time the, the automatic gate so the gate waits until the car is there, then goes up.
You need to have a mechanism that waits, that's gonna force you to stop.
Yeah, if he is, yeah.
Because it won't race, even with gates and in a parking garage as in the hospital district.
If he.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you're gonna have some kid on bike zipping their.
So the only way to guarantee that is that the motion detector doesn't go off until the car's like one or two feet in front of the gate. And then, and then, and then there's a, like a two-second delay and then the gate goes up. That's the only way you're gonna guarantee that to happen. We can ask.
But that's, I mean, that's how they all are. It's pretty common.
Uh.
If I exit a parking garage and it's, and it's way.
Usually, usually because you're doing something with a, you know, putting a ticket in or something. So that's what's slowing it down.
See, I think, looking at this too and realizing there's, there are guardrails. There's forty-two inch above elevation guardrails on either side here. So it's not, you're not gonna be riding your bike down this walkway into this area because that's, so this is like a little chute. Then you have these two.
Red sidewalks out here.
The sidewalks close, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't, I don't like that they're staggered because I imagine that if you pull up to this and thinking lots of things, like you pull up to this and, um, oh, there's parking under the retail. Great, I'm gonna go in there and park. Oh, there's a gate in the way. I'll go around that or I forgot my thing, whatever. And it's easy to get around this single thing here.
True.
If you put something down in the bottom down here, then you, people pull in there and then they're, what's this? There's a gate. There's a big like garage door in front of me. I didn't expect that. I forgot my thing. I'm gonna back up to get out of this trap that I've fallen into.
Right, right, right.
So I, I think, yeah, we need to look at this and see what, this is one of the opportunities to, you know, make this right. Make the, the bells ringing and lights flashing. We don't want that. So figure out something that's, that's safe.
The flashing lights face towards the, the car that's exiting normally, so it's not flashing all over.
Right, we just don't wanna create a commotion when the cat comes out of there.
But we do. Didn't we specify any signs that, you know, the private driveways or anything like that?
Um.
At the beginning?
No, I don't think so.
So you got.
I mean, there's some directional sign, yeah, there is like the directional signs, I think, um.
There must, there must be some kind of sign that you can see before you pull in that says, you know, private entrance.
Oh, yeah.
We should look at that too and see what's needed there.
Okay, so you wanna.
Definitely need.
Talk about this again on your next meeting? Try to arrange a site visit?
Or arrange a time, yeah.
Um, I was gonna say about the next meeting anyways, um, the hotel is gonna come before you, the Courtyard Marriott. They wanna request a modification for you to on a, um, a sidewalk that was approved along the train tracks, asking if they could open prior to finishing, um, open prior to finishing the sidewalk. So I was thinking maybe it'd be worth, if you're available, to do both those site visits? I don't know if we could arrange that to work?
I don't see why not. It shouldn't take all that long.
What if we, or I don't know if you're available like an hour before the meeting? Would that be enough time? But then that's hard to get here.
Well, depending on, you know, and plus we need Trevor and he'll be able to figure that out. It's something we can figure out moving forward, but my concern right now is with his level at the, of construction, you know, at what point does this become critical that he needs feedback from us sooner rather than later?
And the reason why he's coming to us is, or the, they, they saw the designs that they were gonna order and they said, oh, these may not be what they like?
Yeah, he, I mean, he's just looking at his new building now and, and realizing what the, how close that arm is right to the street and that it's, it'll be very noticeable. It'll be very noticeable.
Well, the pole sidewalk right now.
Yeah.
I believe, what I saw the other day going by, so.
Yeah.
And he's, yeah, he's just concentrating on the front now and just kinda realized that this might not be the ideal aesthetic for his building, which I can get, but, you know, there's a lot more that goes into it than just aesthetics.
Right. Yeah, we wanna get this one right, pedestrian safety. So we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Okay.
Try to arrange a site visit if, if, if the sort of last recourse would be to maybe meet at six o'clock.
Okay. Unless anyone has any other times that they can think of, I mean, cause we'd have to.
I just think it's something we're gonna have to talk with him and then we just have to get a general consensus of, you know, you know, a Thursday at, you know, five, six, maybe not a night. We have a meeting, but just, you know.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
Want me to send out one of those like doodle, Google doodle things?
Oh, sure.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Well, I'd say. Send it to you, whatever you'd like to do.
All right.
And I'm not gonna be at the twenty-seventh.
Oh.
All right, on the night, Monday the nineteenth is an Islington task force meeting. Where is that located?
Oh, yeah, so, um, this upcoming Monday, the, um, Board of Selectmen are meeting. Uh, their meeting starts at seven thirty and we just found out it's gonna be at the library.
Maybe a six o'clock site visit?
Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I don't know if we're, if on the agenda, so.
Six thirty probably.
Six thirty, okay.
It's a seven thirty.
Do you wanna, do you wanna try to see if we can arrange that? The Selectmen's meeting starts at seven thirty.
Oh, then we can meet at six thirty and like.
Okay.
But did you also wanna do the, the, uh, hotel?
That's at the. Oh, a site visit for the hotel?
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a site visit for the hotel as well.
For the site?
There's nothing to see at the hotel.
Okay, then if you don't need to go, that's.
I mean, the hotel is, it's not there. The sidewalk is not there.
Right, but not on, not everyone else was on that application, I think, to see where it is, but.
Yeah, they don't wanna show us where they're not gonna put in the sidewalk that they're supposed to put in?
They're going, they wanna, they haven't submitted anything yet, but they, they wanna grade it and get it ready, but they haven't gotten the permission from the MVTA to finish the work cause it's along the train station. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so let's just try for six, six thirty.
I mean, it's mostly Amtrak they need to have a mission.
Amtrak, yeah.
Yeah, they can ask permission whether they can open before they com- complete.
Click that sidewalk.
Ask them to complete.
Yeah, I think we should concentrate on getting Amtrak in a T to allow and, and to do that and allow them permission to do that rather than finding reasons to not do it. Cause I mean, I'm sure they'll be happy to find out reasons why they shouldn't do that, but we want, we want that done. That's very important.
All right, so does Monday at six thirty work for everyone and then?
It does.
And I'll get back to you on, if we have time to go over to the, um, hotel too.
Okay.
We'll find out, I think, the Selectmen's agenda, their meeting starts at seven thirty. I don't know when they'll be talking about the, um, Islington RFP. May not be first on the agenda.
And do we know what the, um, the, um, the business will be at three twenty-one, three twenty-three? Do they plan that?
Not yet. I'm not certain yet.
Sure. All right, so we don't make a decision on this, but we will be, uh, schedule a site visit.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Move on to. That's all we have left of signed decisions, committee reports.
Oh, yes, I prepared, um, the signature page for the earth material movement um, that you approved earlier tonight for Phillips Way and then I'll add in the conditions, um, that you approved tonight.
You wanna add the date?
Sure, thanks.
Uh, this is, uh. Why is it, why do you have too much change here?
Cause I, me and him, did I mess it up? Sorry, cause Trevor, then Trevor called and said he couldn't come today.
Oh, so you don't have to provide names here, but, okay.
Yeah. Abby, do you have any updates that you can share about, um, I saw some things in the notes here about.
Right. Right, we have, um, the toast office, um, that is now open for dinner. Recently open for dinner. First they were doing breakfast, but now dinner and then breakfast all day. Um.
So they expanded their menu?
Um.
They did have.
Now, I can't, yes, I think they did, yeah. I mean, they had lunch before, um, yeah, when I, when I, when I had, um, dinner, yeah. And then Brebe Women's, they submitted, um, a draft revised plan since your last meeting. Um, we've sent it back, reviewed it with Beta. Beta sent some more comments for some more updates since your last meeting. So, um, just some more clarification items, but we're hoping to get the fin- the final, final revision hopefully by the end of this week. So when I get those final plan sets, I'll send them out to you all. Um, then once we review them and approve them as final, um, with the planning board, then they can refer what they're submitting their building permits. And then they did, they were kinda looking at some dates for our groundbreaking, they're hoping for July. And they wanted to check in, they're just floating a couple of dates out there. Wanted to check in with you. Um, they're looking at Monday, July seventeenth, or Wednesday, July nineteenth. If, if any of you have any strong preferences, I mean, they're considering a few things. It'd be something like mid, mid morning on, um, Monday or Wednesday in July.
Yeah, both.
Okay.
Both are fine with me.
Okay. Okay, all right, thanks. And then also Steve had noted there is a Moving Together conference, um, that's an. Um, and then also Steve had noted there is a Moving Together Conference, um, that's an annual conference held in Boston each year. Um, that will be on Thursday, September twenty-eighth. Steve can talk a little bit more about that, he's been to the conference for the next few years, so.
Oh, okay.
We generally budget, at least have enough for one person to attend, so we wanna see if anyone else is interested, Steve's attended in the past. It's an all-day, it's a Thursday, I think it starts at eight, eight AM and goes to about four o'clock or four thirty.
Well, it's all about, uh, big emphasis on pedestrian and bicycle transportation and how that's integrated into the whole.
How's great.
Uh, scheme of things with MassStar.
Two different seminars, what they do.
So they, they have, uh, speakers and then they have, oh, usually they have two, uh, very series of sessions in the morning and two in the afternoon. And the one right after lunch has generally been, a lot of them are, are field trips they have available, where they actually take you out in Boston to see some of the things that they've been doing, I don't, one of them, Tommy went to the city of Boston, showed how they are putting in bicycle lanes in, uh, various locations, Beacon Hill and, I don't know.
Did they have structured walls or was it just painted lines?
No, so they showed us where and described, cause they, it hadn't happened yet, they described what they were going to do in, in, uh, was it Stanford Street? Where was the divided median street, they removed the barrier and so the traffic, just the double solid yellow line. And on one side of the road, there is now a bicycle, uh, a, a protected bicycle lane. Uh, that's at sidewalk level and it's very distinctive, so that, uh, bicycles will use it and pedestrians as well. Things like that, they, they also showed a protected bicycle lane that they were trying out on Beacon Street last year, uh.
Yes.
And which they're going to do more, so they, they have various field trips like that. Uh, one year we went down to the new, uh, train station at the Yarke Station. Uh, and they showed us that and a lot of things about how that was built and, and how it works. So it's, it's all, it's a very worthwhile conference, very interesting. And then, of course, the, all the consultants exhibiting there and you get to meet a lot of, and find out a lot of things from a lot of different, uh, vendors. So, uh, planning board has paved my way, but if anyone wants to go, then I'm, we can provide it to you and I'll just pave my own way.
All right, so I'll, I'll send out the link to everyone and if you're interested, let me know and we'll see what we can do about registration.
Right, so the, I think, I don't know if the planning board agrees to provide someone with, with that, they have the money to provide someone with the, uh, I think it's about a hundred and.
Yeah, it's usually about a hundred, I think, or so.
Dollars, whatever. And, uh, so it's available one person, if anyone's really interested, we should just decide so that we can, uh, I'll sign up. It's, you don't wanna wait till September.
Okay.
And what kind of committees within the town are the, the strongest as far as advocating for, um, like we had the sidewalks down up on one oh nine.
Just really bike.
We've talked about in Gay Street recently. Um, what's the biggest driver in the town for that here?
Right. Well, if it's, the Board of Selectmen are the road commissioners, um, but we also have a pedestrian bike safety committee, which is technically falls under, um, as a subcommittee of the planning board, but they are appointed, I think there's about ten members, um, Steve is the planning board representative, Dave used to also be on, um, that committee, but, um, they often make recommendations to the planning board and then there's also, um, the DPW director and myself are also in the, um, police, um, public safety officer is also on that committee, so they weigh in and, and work together with staff on recommendations, but, um, I know there's another item that they discussed recently that, um, so generally they're advisory to the planning board, then the planning board will advise the Board of Selectmen.
So everyone's welcome to attend those meetings and if you wanna find out more, come to one of those meetings.
They meet on Thursdays.
Thursday, the fourth Thursday of the month.
Yep, seven thirty in this room.
Yeah, so the next meeting is the twenty-second, I believe.
Yes.
How's the, um, membership, like, I know there's been some new people were appointed, but could they use more, right, yes?
Yeah, they think they can always use more, yep, they've had about three new members appointed in the last six, six months or so, three or four members.
Do you always have a static amount of members or is it kinda fluctuating?
Well, I think they run about a dozen or so members, uh.
Uh, I think there's ten members right now, or.
Ten plus the ex-official.
Yeah, ten committee, four committees, then we have the ex-official, which is staff for, for us.
The original idea was to have somebody from every school district, just kinda like, help anchor it around the schools and different schools and all.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. So the problem has been getting people, those people, because they keep changing every year. So to get someone from each school and get that consistently year after years, that's been the problem.
Right.
But, you know, so the next meeting is, uh, on the twenty-second, right here at seven thirty. So there was something that, actually, we have something from that committee meeting. Uh, we had a vote a couple of meetings back actually to, uh, recommend that, uh, that we asked the Selectmen if the town could adopt the provisions of the new, uh, speed limit law that's been passed. Uh, I know it's been adopted by Boston, probably Cambridge and Somerville. Uh, and the new law, the law, well, the law says that, uh, if you're in a, uh, thickly settled zone with the speed limit is presumed to be thirty miles an hour and this new law allows, and it, and it give, at a town, or a city's option to elect to, uh, change that to twenty-five miles an hour. So this only includes unmarked streets, if it's posted with another speed limit, obviously, you just, that's the speed limit account. But all little side streets, neighborhood streets, residential streets, uh, right now the speed limit is thirty miles an hour. And, uh, that would change to twenty-five miles an hour and what all the town has to do is post on the, you know, the entering Westwood signs, another sign that says, uh.
Secondary roads.
It just says, well, I saw a sign in Boston already, it says, it says, speed limit twenty-five miles an hour unless posted. Of course, they can say that because there are no, uh, rural streets. I think every street is, is a thickly settled district in Cambridge, Somerville. Uh, so I don't know if there are any streets in Westwood that are not thickly settled, which are unpasted, which would be twenty-five miles an hour instead of thirty. But the second part of the, uh, recommendation is the Selectmen is, we figure out if there are any and have, ask them to be posted with the normal posting process that hasn't changed, uh, with the state. And then the third part of the, uh, thing that, that we voted for was that, uh, University Avenue between, uh, Canton Street and the railroad station is now unpasted because of what was reconstructed, so, uh, it now needs, and it now, obviously twenty-five miles an hour would not be appropriate, so that now needs to be, go through the whole speed limit posting process and get some kind of speed limit. And I, my guess would be something like thirty-five miles an hour, uh, it could be less, could, I doubt it would come out more. But in times of no traffic, it seems to be, it's very, very speed. But, but right now, it's not posted, so it's technically thirty.
And we would have to post this at every entry to the town?
There aren't that many actually, but, yeah. Um, so Boston's doing it and, uh, I mean, if it's a little side street, you may not need it, but, uh, generally in all the main streets you'd want it.
Sounds like a wise delight. Personally.
And, and, uh, and when this was, when this law was first proposed, I was a little nervous in saying, well, some of these streets just not suitable for twenty-five miles an hour, but then I started looking around and all streets like Gay Street, Cypress Street, they're all posted.
Yes.
With higher speed limits.
Yeah, all the secondary roads.
So, so would not, yeah, so it wouldn't change, it's, it's those neighborhood streets where automobiles shouldn't really be going more than twenty-five, that we were doing that.
So even, like, you know, even just, if I posted like Webster Street, Parker Street, all that, no one would go even twenty-five who lives there probably.
Yeah. Right.
Maybe it's a stop to progress, yeah.
Sometimes, sometimes they will, but that's, that's the whole point of having the, is the presumed speed limit. So, uh.
That's great.
So.
You said a proposal for it.
So, so, so with those unanimous vote of the pedestrian and bicycle committee, uh, safety committee, and what we'd like to do is now accept their recommendation and pass it on to the Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, take that three-part motion, uh, uh, from the pedestrian bicycle safety committee and, uh, send that recommendation on to the Selectmen.
A second.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. I, if you had seen, I, I had copied the motion from the pedestrian bike safety, it was in the updated meeting summary, that was, it was, um, but yes, Steve summarized it, but, um, it was at their January, January twenty-sixth meeting.
I did it from memory.
Yes, good job.
See if it was accurate.
When is the ice cream store gonna open?
Yes, so Birdies, they came in last week and picked up their, um, license, so they were gonna be training, I think, over the weekend. And they didn't give us an exact date of when they're opening, they were just seeing how the training was going over the next few days, so, um, hopefully this week.
It looks like some of the, some of the papers pulled back, looks like there's some good seating in there.
Good, yeah, so they're opening this week, so be checking it out. They didn't wanna set a hard date, they just wanted to get in there and get everyone trained first, so hopefully soon.
We're gonna get email addresses?
Yes, so the town is working on creating email addresses for, um, the elected and regulatory board, so, um, they're working on setting those up. Um, so that way, so they'll be contacting you, probably you'll have your, it'll be like a planning board email address. Um, so once that's up and running, then I'll be using those in correspondence with you. Um, that way it separates your personal emails from any of the material that, that you're working on for this, in case there was ever a public records request and then. So, I mean, you'll have to get used to checking this, this new email, um, in case they send updates, but.
It did say it's gonna be, you know, operable through your mobile phone.
Yeah, it's added as an account.
Okay. Okay.
Well, will there be forwarding available if we wanted to forward it to another email address?
I assume so.
It kinda gets rid of the idea of being private.
Yeah, right.
Well, it is, cause no one knows where it was forwarded to.
Uh, it's slippery stuff.
Uh, because you're saying it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause if there was ever a request for all correspondence with planning board members, it would go to that email and then to the other one?
But still, it's still. Still all listed for the town.
Yes, I assume the idea is it's received by the town on a, there's a mail server.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a secure mail server, not if somebody's basically.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, if there's ever a request, then you could pull it off of that server and that way it would be easier to comply with.
So with that point, would it matter if you had forwarded somewhere else?
Right, cause you could be, pull it off there, pull it off the server, whatever.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's fine, it's, cause any request for records is gonna come off the town server as opposed to your direct email.
Yeah, that's all clean.
Yeah, so something, programs like Outlook allow you to have different email addresses.
Right.
All come up in the same, uh, program.
So, um, minutes, did everyone have a chance to read? I didn't know if this was.
I, I did find a couple of little things on the first two and the five one I didn't particularly notice anything.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, there was three sets.
I'm wanting to get back and give you the corrections.
Yeah, April eleventh, April twenty-fourth, and then May first. Do you have them now?
No, I did, I'd have to look at them and, I can't remember. I just noticed a few things.
Do, I have them right here if you wanna.
Right.
And so I'll, I'll send out the, um, link about that conference and then if, if anyone's interested, if you let me know right away so we could get you registered early.
I mean, is anybody, is anyone interested, I'm curious, like, I think I went to it many years ago too, it was, it is really cool, it's very interesting.
Are you interested?
I'm, I'm interested, yeah, but I don't want, I want, if somebody else wants it, they should go.
If you're interested, say so.
All right, then I'm interested.
Okay, so Dave's interested?
I just want, the, the wording should be, not totally clear on the, our motion for the, uh, we voted unanimously in favor to support the Finn Carmes recommendation for indefinite postponement and unfavorable action on, on August twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. I think it's.
Unfavorable action for town meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that.
We, we voted unanimously to favor the Finn Carmes recommendation and voted unanimously, uh, for unfavorable action on August, I think it is.
Okay.
The way to fight.
This was ever meeting before the town meeting?
Yes, April eleventh was when.
I think you could just strike the, we just voted to, to support the motion for indefinite postponement.
No, no, we, no, we specifically, cause this is important because in order to prevent them from coming back the following year, you have to have a, a, uh, unfavorable action on it. That's why this is important. voted unanimously, uh, for unfavorable action on August twenty-one. Where was it, where was the other one?
Is there anything else besides any minutes?
Did I sign? Oh, I guess I, yeah.
I don't think so.
So you wanna, I'll just give these corrections and we'll put them in another meeting?
Or, we'd like to.
Oh, if I can find this second one.
I think you could move to approve these.
With my corrections, we'll just, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm only approve these with the few minor corrections I'm making.
Second.
Okay.
All three of the, all three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing else, right? No other items?
Nope.
And I think we should have a motion for adjournment.
Like to make a motion to adjourn meet tonight's meeting?
A second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.